Let's stand and do the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are you here for public discussion?
Yes.
Okay. You want to come forward a little bit and state your name?
I'm Don Crosby and I'm trying to buy the two lots, the tax lots.
He's coming up.
Oh, you're on the agenda today. Okay. We'll get you then.
Okay.
Anyone?
No, he's.
Bill Brakes is here for service work. And I'm sure he's here because of the road, so. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda in minutes dated October seventeenth. Second by Stecker, or.
Motion.
Motion and second by.
I'll second.
Flackter. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried unanimous. Dale.
Ready for fifteen more years?
Oh, that'd be nice. Congratulations, Dale. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're sure appreciate it, Lord. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How many years we did?
Fifteen.
He's gonna do fifteen more.
Yeah. You know, when I took over for Bob Pink, I think he went up into his eighties, so you know. You never know. I'm good close.
We are to our agenda item discussion. Assignment of county health tax certificates on parcel fourteen twenty-five one twenty-seven zero one seven and fourteen twenty-five one twenty-seven zero one eight. And Nick, would you come up?
Sure. There's a couple parcels up in Byrd, right on Main Street there. Parcels that are in the red are in two narrow parcels. Our tax cell to the county from twenty ten. And Donald Crosby would like to see if he, if the board would assign those certificates to him so he can do the work that it would take to take deed to them. I don't know if you got, if you want to talk just a little bit why you're interested in them.
Well, I live right next door and I want my shed there to store some stuff. I don't know, it's been emptied, full of stuff. I don't know what to do with all that stuff or what.
So, yeah. Well, right now, the taxes do. On the one, just the taxes is five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And the other one is four hundred and ninety-six. That's just the taxes. And I don't believe there are any drainage assessments on that.
Main Street. That's right on Main Street?
Yes, it's right on Main Street. There was a couple parcels beside it that were assigned to a company several months ago. And they did take deed to those two properties, so. And it's in the name of the same name on the parcels that Mr. Crosby would like to take assignment on. From the property owner, so. And he doesn't seem like there's a lot of interest. The current property owner doesn't seem like there's much interest in paying the taxes.
Well, if he has an interest, he can do it now.
Yeah. So, but I would, I mean, I would recommend kind of doing what we've done in the past. Assign it for the assignment fee and, and once deed is issued, obey taxes. All billing with taxes, so that I have kind of a fresh start. I'm sure, I'm sure Mr. Crosby will keep up on the taxes.
I would make that motion. Retransfer to him and the assignment fee pays.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Everybody understand the motion? Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Post. Motion carried unanimous.
Thank you. Yeah, it seems like any more of the best way to get these things cleaned up is something like this, so.
Yep.
It's been working.
Yep. Good luck.
Thank you.
In our folder, we have the corridor reports for the auditor, recorder, sheriff, and veterans affairs. Take a minute to look at them. Any questions in any of the corridor report?
I'd move to approve.
I have a motion by Stecker to approve, second by Flack. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Post. Motion carried unanimous.
Get better a little bit.
So you're not a cripple anymore?
Oh, I'm still crippled.
You're up next, Bill. They're still writing. We'll give you a chance to get up here. Sign it on the A side.
That is helpful.
Yeah. It's gonna make us look all the time on which side it's on.
Fire away, Phil.
Um, I don't have much new, kind of same old, same old. Still working on hiring people, still working on transition of the cities to the county. Pretty much have Algonquin cleaned up. We're not seeing much for bills coming into the city of Algonquin anymore. Everything in there is pretty much transitioned to the county. There are a few odds and ends thanks to Medicaid, Medicare. We're still cleaning up. That should be getting close, so we should be able to do a transitional funds there in the near future. So we said it means that we didn't transition them over till middle of August rather than July first. We still have some bills coming in there. I stopped the city hall up there yesterday. Last month, we had four bills that came in. So even though we did make the change to August fifteenth, you know, two months in, we're, we're down to four, four bills that came in. So we about got that one cleaned up too, so. Within the next month, that one should be. Same way, then we can get some money transitioned over. As far as money wise, we are starting to see some direct deposits coming in finally. It's been three months in, so we're starting to see direct deposits. Start to see checks coming in. As we're getting checks, we're getting those transitioned to direct deposits. We're not dealing with a lot of checks. Pretty much everything will come direct deposit. So I did have, the billing company was here last Monday. I would go over some of that stuff in person while they're here. Then we did a training Monday night with the whole county. I remember a month ago, I went to Des Moines to have billing and documentation conference. So we rolled that class out last Monday night to the whole county. We had about forty-five people in attendance from the county, which is a good number. So we did go over billing documentation. So we had three presenters. I presented myself. We had two gals from PCC here that presented, then we also had Gary Merrill from the Iowa Department of Public Health here that presented. So it was about a three hour class. We rolled out that night and had three presenters. So well-received, well-attended, good information was put out, so. Part of that is we are making a transition per the state to a new software that we're using for our patient care report. So we will be finishing that up now that we, we rolled that out of the meeting, so we'll get that transitioned over. Our last advisory council meeting was September twelfth. Was kind of a different meeting because rather than discussing the transition, we were able to talk about funds and staffing and where we're going with EMS, so kind of what the group was intended for rather than worrying about getting everything transitioned over. So we did review budget numbers both last year's and this year's for Cusouk County, City of Algonquin, the city of Sway City, so we did kind of review all three of those and. Our next meeting is November fourteenth. We decided to go two months at the end of October. I did send out financials for the month of October to the, to the advisory council for their review and then, or the end of September, excuse me, and then at the end of October, we'll have those at the November meeting. Our new ambulance arrived after two and a half years. We got it delivered, which is good because we had three ambulances in the shop last week with breakdowns. We were down to one truck. And Friday night, we had two home football games. Both of us, Gary and I, had no bonus, so we were kind of struggling to get vehicles in place and their new truck showed up and we got one out of the shop. So we were able to make sure that everything got covered, so. It's kind of a welcome addition because we have one truck that's really been nickel and diming us lately on repairs. It's got two hundred and forty, fifty, some thousand miles on it. It's a two thousand and eight. It's time that it gets flipped to the, in the back row, so. Nothing new on the other, on the other ambulance, so still waiting on that. We're going to ME class, a little different than EMS. We're going, going to ME class next Friday, so we'll be gone next Friday for an ME class. Other than that, I don't have much else. Anybody have any questions on anything going on or?
New ambulance was equipped the way you wanted it. Everything worked out fine?
Yep.
Good.
We did, so the new ambulance we got has two oxygen tanks rather than one. During COVID, we were having a hard time transferring patients mainly because of our oxygen usage to, to get them anywhere. So the new one is equipped with two tanks now. We did have a small oxygen link when we, when we put our tanks in, so they're coming up to, to work on that. So that's the only thing we have and it might just be, hopefully it's almost simple. Other than that, everything's going great with it. Yeah.
It's working.
It's working.
Sounds good.
Made it, made it, made it voyage to a football game, so.
Anything else for Phil? If not, thank you much, Bill.
Thank you guys. See you later.
Donna, we are up to wellness committee minutes. Anybody have any question on the minutes?
I got your information.
Yeah, I just couldn't say. Is that your number on there? Nine five nine five? Well, we don't have to call that.
No, no, I got your information.
Do you have any new updates from wellness?
Um, I don't know wellness. We're doing flu shots. I think in the, this third quarter, did I have the weight listed? I lost over a hundred pounds, I thought. So people are doing okay. I think the way to go program will continue into next year. We do little things in addition. I think. Trying to think what we're doing in December. I think the sweater, ugly sweater contest, January, well, November of mindfulness or being thankful activities. So we try and throw in little activities.
Silent auction.
Silent auction.
We're not doing COVID anymore. You just got, how, how, you want to play more, do you, how do you do that for the Hy-Vee?
I think Hy-Vee is offering the vaccines. I've only heard, I mean, as far as here personally or work wise, I haven't kept up with it, but I think I heard on the radio that even the clinics and the nursing homes haven't gotten them, but you can go to Hy-Vee. You get your shot.
And they still answer our insurance or no?
I'm assuming, yeah, like any other vaccine, yeah. I have no clue on the cost. I think isn't like. I thought the shingles shot, I forget what it was.
That was like, I think I paid forty-five dollars a dose for that.
Yeah, I.
That one I had to pay on my own pocket, but I just want to write more about this.
I don't, I don't know about the COVID. I'm sure they can tell you, but I don't know. I haven't, I've not kept up with that. It was so overwhelming for a while there. We had binders of stuff, so.
Anything else for wellness? If not, let the record show that we acknowledge the wellness committee minutes. And then we will go into our monthly update on general assistance.
General assistance, I just brought a couple of the flyers. I know I talk about these programs that we partner with all the time, but Community Action, October for disabled and elderly, you can apply. And then November, you can apply for energy assistance. Lori, she's in the Cusouk County office, which is on Call Street, the Tool Business Center. And she's here two days a week this year, so that's very good news. When we talk about who we partner with, there are very, very few people that reside in the county or are present in the county. So it kind of gets hard, but she's there on Mondays and Thursdays. The last six weeks, they've been out of emergency funding, so we've had quite a few apps for that. Some of those bills are in several thousand dollars. And we do, yeah, yeah. Our notice is a hundred and fifty, so that isn't even going to touch, touch that several thousand dollars. A lot of it's just education. I'm continuing to pay, and I know that there's been public press releases encouraging individuals with energy assistance to continue to pay on the bill. The water bill, they have to pay on, or they can be subject to disconnect, but even with their energy, when we have people ending up August, September, October with several thousand dollars, there is not, there's not even collectively, when we partner together, that that can be met. The income guidelines are on the left-hand side. Quite honestly, we rarely have people even meet those threshold guidelines, and most people are eligible to contact us. The next two pages are Christmas programs. Adopt a family will be starting, starting a week early. So Thursday, October twenty-sixth will be our first day for taking applications. I've had, I think, about six agencies contacting me interested in adopting, so that's good. We're starting a week early despite my reservations always hold off, but with our shopping, people have to travel to get most things, so we start a little bit early or if they want to go online. And then I included DHS, just their phone numbers. I think, I know I've expressed that numerous times. I know we're not going to change it, but for individuals to, to have access to a one eight hundred number. Literally, you can be on the phone for fifty minutes, you might get disconnected, you might not get the right person. I guess last week I did speak with somebody with a client with AmeriGroup, and we were on the phone for over an hour, but actually they were responsive. Historically, you're calling, I'll give individuals three one eight hundred numbers. I can sit and call with some of them, but usually we're just on the phone listening to bad elevator music. I think DHS is saying, even with their expedited food stamps, which usually I think they try to process in seventy, ten days, they might be several weeks out because of the backlog. So those are kind of the challenges in general assistance. Nothing significantly new, but I just thought I'd maybe clarify a little bit more for you.
DHS website's not very helpful.
I have not had, I'm, you know, again, I think they would probably not be happy if I indicated what my thoughts were, but if I, if anybody asks me my opinion, I'm saying get a paper application, make a copy. I've not had anybody successfully use that portal and get through.
And they have come in and got their printers and some other stuff out of the annex, so, you know, they don't plan on coming back.
Message is clear.
Yeah, yeah.
They haven't physically been here, well, it went to us the whole time eleven, twelve years ago. Angela left three and a half years ago, and then they've had a presence, but yeah, they removed the server and the printers, so. I don't think that they'll be.
They, they are still paying for the rent, but they have removed the stuff.
I think they'll continue the presence. I don't know if it'll be as big, but I think they'll continue, or having a presence. I'm not saying that they're present in presence.
Yeah, because they're.
Their presence is present.
There, there's no predictability to that, so. Any questions, anything?
No, if not, let the record show that we acknowledge the general assistance. And thank you, Donna.
You're right.
Appreciate it. We are up to decision to approve resolution for LAT CF funds to be used for bullet resistant glass project.
I also put on the resolution, because we haven't used the LAT CF funds, but you have approved using those funds for security on the third floor and then the bullet resistant glass on the countertop. I put both of those on the resolution. Both of those have been approved, just not by resolution. And so I typed up a resolution that, like for the COVID fund, or like for the ARPA funds, this is for the LAT CF ones.
And the date of that resolution is. The day we did that was ten twenty-four twenty-three oh one. Yep, so the resolution number is ten twenty-four twenty-three oh one.
I'd move to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion on second to approve the resolution. Is there any discussion on it? If not, do a roll call vote, please.
Flack?
Yes.
Flackter?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Jax?
Yes.
Will the warranty need to take a while?
Um, we're not.
We're not gonna do that.
Todd's not, and he'll be here this morning, so he's asking to put it on next week's agenda.
Hey Doug, we're ready for you. Thanks. Kendall, are you here for the warranty deed?
Yes, I am.
Todd's not gonna be here this morning, so he asked us to postpone it to next week.
When?
Next Tuesday.
Okay. You had to come into town, lady. Thanks.
We'll all be notified, though.
Yeah, I know. All right, see you next week.
Thanks, Warren. Thank you. We are up to set a public hearing to classify one sixty-fifth avenue between two hundred and fiftieth and two hundred and sixtieth street as a service level B.
Yeah, I heard the request last week of the board. I have prepared a motion. It is in your electronic folder to set a public hearing establishing one sixty-five avenue between two fifty street and two sixty street as a level B maintenance, uh, level B road.
The resolution number will be ten twenty-four twenty-three oh two.
We would need to get a time date.
Right. How much time do we need?
Half an hour?
No, I mean, for the date, do we have waiting?
We're gonna wait two weeks.
Well, we'd have to publish it per, so that and Tammy, not, not less than four, not greater than twenty. Is what the publication would have to be.
Yeah, so we're looking at November fourteenth or seventh?
Is the board meeting on the seventh?
No.
No, so they have to be the fourteenth.
Will you have time? Yeah, so you could get it in the paper by the second, November second. Would you be able to do that?
Yes.
Okay, and that would be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Yep, so you're good.
We, yeah, would you rather do it on the twenty-first? It's still working. Are we too many days?
No, that's gonna be too many.
That's too many days.
You could just publish it later if you.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, you could publish it.
Whatever the board chooses, I can.
Why don't, why don't we do it on the twenty-second, new publication, or a little, twenty-first, I mean, and publish it a little later?
Before we get too far on that, um, what level do you consider that road being maintained now, Doug?
Well.
That is, I guess, well, question is.
Here, here's the deal. I don't want a level B road out there. I use my property most every day, and there's other people. On the weekends, I might have ten vehicles. The other day, after the three quarters of nature rain, I fight mud to get to my, my lake property. If we go to a level B road, then they don't have to maintain the road at all. They don't have to move snow to it. I use that property weekly for fishing up there during the winter. The only reason that we're getting snow removal is because they come to that hog house just north of me and they come down to my nine one one number, so if something happens, I have access. I don't want a level B road out there. I just mean you not even have this public hearing because he's abandoned the road for twenty years without moving that down to a level B from the top of that hill both ways.
So we have discussed only doing a portion of that road. We're not doing from intersection to intersection. That's the way I understood it, correct? So we would.
I was going to advertise it as the whole, the whole mile, what is chosen to be level B can be shorter than that whole line.
So that discussion is still open?
But that level B road going down to the bridge affects the property value of Dad's land. There's people, when that comes out of CRP, that's farmland. Even in CRP, that's farmland. I wouldn't want to take a grain truck up over that hill. You'd bust the axles all the hell on it. And it's not a level B road. It's supposed to be maintained at some sort of a level. I feel like Marshall Dillon. I came in here trying to get something across the bridge, doing it the right way. Now I'm worried about my back getting shot out every time I turn around. If I don't face him, I'm getting shots at the back. I think this is a shot in the back for me. He has a hundred and one excuses why it can't be a level C road. The liability, which is in the code, that there is no liability. And here I said, now wants to make it a level B road. It hasn't been maintained for twenty years.
May I, may I speak?
Yeah.
First of all, you're directing he, me. The Board of Supervisors is who directed the county engineer to do this, so please keep me out of this, will you please?
Who, who told you to not maintain the road from the top of the hill to the bridge?
I think it's pretty clear. The amount of traffic using that road, the amount of maintenance needed is pretty clear. That, that is not being used. I, I think photographs, videos that have been presented to the board of supervisors more than adequately, adequately describe the amount of traffic, the amount of maintenance. We have not received requests in our office to maintain that road more. Yes, you came in in July, and you had a, had an idea that you thought you should be able to put a privately owned bridge on a public road.
A class C road.
No, no, you.
If it was changed to a class C.
If it's a class C road, it's, it's still a public road. Let's make that straight, Casoot County has interest in it. There's no way, the only way for Casoot County not to have interest in it is if it's vacant. Plain and simple. I think that the board of supervisors know that. It's been explained to them. Now, if you wanna talk about this, you could talk about it at a public hearing. Just because the board's having a public hearing doesn't mean they're making a decision. They're not gonna do it today. But you brought it up, you wanted to put a bridge on a public road. Ultimately, and I believe the board sees that, it can't happen. There are multiple reasons. Now, I don't know how you're driving up to your lake house and getting your mud. I don't, I don't know where that's happening. I went down that road Friday. I was able to drive in, drive out.
Have done it after a rain. That's the problem.
I, again, I'll, I'll go out there after rain.
Your maintainer man comes up there and levels, the last time he was up there, he left ruts this speed trying to get back out. If that goes to a level B road, I'll have less, and even if it's to the top of that hill, that has been a level A road for twenty years, and it has been abandoned.
Dick, we are going to set a public hearing, and that time for that discussion is at the public hearing, not now.
Well, but I, I'd like you to say, no, we're not changing it to a level B road. We're not even gonna have a discussion on it.
Last week, we had a motion to have a public hearing.
Well, we didn't have a motion, but we did direct the engineer to start the process of changing this to a level B.
Yeah, and, and, and with that conversation, it was that we would advertise the whole thing, and a shorter section could be, um, named, so potentially the same area that you were requesting for a level C could be made level B in that regard, but, um, in, in some regards, that is conversation for the public hearing. That's the purpose of scheduling it. There's no decision that's set in stone at this point.
We would like some input from the other landowners on that mile.
Well. If you now, if he doesn't wanna change it, why should we go through all the expenses?
What other landowners does it affect?
I'd say just drop it.
What other landowners does it affect? Should we spend taxpayer money and go through all the expenses? End up with the same thing, probably, and not do anything.
I guess the issue for me is having a road that's classified as level A that we're not maintaining to a level A. I mean, that's, that's my issue with it. I mean, I realize it's been that way for twenty years or whatever, but that doesn't mean it should've happened that way.
But even the, the new, after people who are retired, the new guy that's grading the road, I went out and said, why don't you come up my road? He has been instructed once a year. I've gotten it to words, now it's oftener, but like last year on the piece north, when they cut sod in the fall, they ended up throwing all the gravel back in the ditch again. They put two, two loads of gravel on that section this year, but it's not enough up by my lane. After it rains, you, yesterday, I fought mud going into my property. I picked up mud and I threw it down my white rock going into my lane. I'd just soon leave it, they've abandoned it for twenty years without worrying about liability. Let's abandon it for another twenty years and leave it to level A road. I can call in and say, hey, up to my lane, I want snow removal, and I want, I'd like gravel put on one snow mile. If we, if we give them a chance to go level B, I'll lose access to my, my, my pond lane even.
That, that's just not true again. Um, the board, and the board has acted previous level B roads where they do not start a level B road at its access with another road. It'd be after, uh, building site, after a grain storage site.
After points of access.
But what happens, what happens if that land comes back into production? How do I fight the hill with a grain truck? Most guys have semis nowadays. How do we get out of that land? There's no way to come up over that hill onto my property. If we make that a level B road, it's just me that's gonna be affected. Because none of the other people are gonna give a shit when you send them off, because they have access points other places.
Yeah, I, I feel like if we're gonna keep it as it is, it should be maintained to a level A road. I mean, that's, that's my issue.
Well, well, you're. Direct the engineer to make sure that it's maintained to level.
Sure that means all the way to the bridge.
We talked about that last week.
Oh, yeah, we'll just make sure we'll, we'll work from here and maintain it to level A to the bridge.
That costs money too, probably more than publication.
Doesn't get traveled that much, so it's gonna take, it's gonna be like another road that's getting a hundred cars a day on it. There's, there's very little traffic on that road, so it's gonna, it's gonna take a lot of money to maintain it.
Hey, I would think it'll take more than publication costs, but.
I make a motion to get started to, to leave it as is and keep it as level A and direct the engineer to maintain it as level A to the bridge.
Do I have a second, Mr. Plask's motion? I'll second Mr. Plask's motion, so that we can have a vote. Is there any discussion?
Doug, do you have any idea what it would cost to maintain that to a level A for the entirety of that length of road?
Well, I, I mean, the first thing we're gonna have to do is go and, uh, spray everything, get the grass out of it, and then, we'll have to run a maintainer up and down. We'll have to see, I guess.
If you divide that over the twenty years, it's not gonna be very expensive. Twenty years, it was neglected.
Would you, uh, please read the motion?
Yeah, motion by Plask, second by Jarks, to, uh, leave one hundred and sixty-fifth avenue between two hundred and fiftieth street and two hundred and sixtieth street as a level A road and direct the engineer to maintain as such.
Any more discussion? Do a roll call vote, please.
Plask.
Yes.
Whacker.
Pass.
Stecker.
No.
Jarks.
I'll pass and let Mr. Whacker vote.
Whacker.
Help me out here.
Did you say no?
I said no.
Jarks.
I'll say yes. It'll be a tie vote, so it won't carry.
Okay, we'll have to bring it back, put it back in the agenda when we have a full board.
Yeah.
To put it off for next week, we gotta.
Otherwise, Carter said if we needed him, we could call him too. It's up to you.
But I hate to have Carter vote on something that he has no.
Yeah, he hasn't been in the discussion.
No discussion. We'll put it back on the agenda.
I.
We're not here next Tuesday, right?
Yeah, we are. It's the seventh. We're not. We're here the thirty-first, until eight-thirty.
Till eight-thirty.
Okay.
I don't think we're gonna have time to vote on it.
I, I'd make a motion to set a public hearing on November twenty-first.
Uh, Mr. Stecker makes a motion?
Resolution?
It's the.
We have a resolution.
Yeah, just for that date, yep.
And would you please?
Do we need a time in there?
Yeah, if you would, please give me the date and time.
Nine AM on November twenty-first. I think that.
Resolution number, could you repeat that?
Correct, ten twenty-four twenty-three oh two.
Thank you.
Do I have a second to Mr. Stecker's motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Whacker. Any discussion on the motion? Would you repeat the motion, please?
Um, motion by Stecker, second by Whacker, to set a public hearing for November twenty-first at nine o'clock AM by resolution ten twenty-four twenty-three oh two.
Do a roll call vote, please.
Plack.
No.
Whacker.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Jarks.
Yes.
I think that's.
We will get that advertised. Excuse me. Yeah, please. And will you be putting something on the agenda then Tuesday, or do you want you and I to talk about that? Or how do you wanna handle that, Tammy?
Do we need anything on, since they passed the resolution?
When to publish it?
So, the previous.
Yeah, that, that doesn't.
That's all?
Yeah. Very good.
Thanks.
I would discuss a little bit with you too, Tammy, to make sure that I.
Understand. Sure, sounds good. Yep.
We have some construction in the road right away, Doug?
Yeah, we got a couple of items. Interstate Power and Light of Britt, they, uh, requested to do some work in the road right away. They're installing a three-phase, uh, primary to, uh, uh, building site owned by Rich Rosenmeyer. Putting a pedestal on pole, and I recommend that the board would approve of this request.
I would move to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Stecker. Any discussion from the board? Seeing on all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried unanimously.
Okay, and then, uh, also, we have a bridge construction project that'd be on the north line of section thirty-four of, uh, that'd be Prairie Township, which requires one hundred and seventy street be closed between two hundred and twenty and two hundred and thirty avenue to all traffic, so I'd ask the board to act on that motion. Or, excuse me, that resolution.
You have that resolution.
The resolution is in the electronic folder, and I do have a copy here for.
Yeah, I just put in this morning at seven-thirty.
And you could see it yesterday. The resolution number is ten twenty-four twenty-three oh three. Does everybody understand the motion and the resolution? With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Motion by Whacker, second by Stecker. Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, although, uh, do a roll call vote.
Plack.
Yes.
Whacker.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Jarks.
Yes. Resolution carried unanimously.
All right, so Roger, if we could have me sign that, prevent, and then Tammy and Roger on that one. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just thinking about that.
Anything else, Doug?
Uh, yes, um, the bridge south of Taikanka, they will be installing approach guard rail. They're looking at, uh, the beginning of next week. They believe they'll get that done, uh, so that bridge should be.
We'll be ready for you, Sam. You wanna come down?
We have some pilot repair projects. One is finished. That was on the north line, section fifteen of Prairie Township. We had a concrete pile that had deteriorated on that, and it was repaired. Graves, uh, Graves Construction Company out of Spencer did that, and they are working now on a, another pile project repair. Uh, this is in Winnebago Township, the north line of section twenty. Uh, Colercliner work, I talked about this a couple of weeks ago, but they are doing that work, uh, this morning and this afternoon, and that's on age sixteen. There's three locations. Um, we have some new employees at the transfer station. Scott Schillington was hired in Ledyard. Dustin Walters was hired, and at Lakota, we have Heath Paulson, who is going to start Monday. So we have a couple of open positions at the mechanic shop yet, and we have another position at Lakota that needs to be filled. Ron Inglbarts will be finished up there in the middle of December. Um, Luke and I, and some of our summer help, we're, uh, working on snow removal roads, no snow removal roads. Um, I'm hoping to bring to the board a list of roads for no snow removal, so that you can remove, re, uh, so that you can review that next week and, uh, sometime just take action, just to say, yes, these are our no snow removal roads. I was contacted last week by a company called Chiron Repair, I like Chiron, Iowa. Uh, if you remember a few years ago, uh, I think it was two thousand thirteen, we actually took down a tower at the Burt location, and the DOT at that time put up a different tower, and we put our antennas on that same tower. Uh, this company is interested in the old tower that we have laying in two sections up there. They have provided a certificate of insurance with Casoot County being, uh, being named as an additional insured. Uh, at the time, we did have another company, they were unable to provide insurance. These people are willing to just remove the tower. I think it'd be good, so I've given them permission to remove it. And then, uh, I don't know if you heard in the news, but Navigator, um, I can't think of the name of the project, but Navigator up there with our, uh, ethanol plant has, uh.
I think it's Heartland Green.
Yeah, yes. It's all, it's all the same. They canceled their project.
So they, they are no longer, um, moving that way, and then when you guys wanna work on solar in ordinance, just let me know.
Thanks.
Solar night.
Thanks, Doug.
All right.
When you guys put that resolution in the paper for him, can you put org C on level B or C? That way we can discuss both options at one time?
The resolution only says level B.
I realize that. Could it be changed, though, to put level B or C? So we can discuss both options and possibilities of the road?
You'd have to have a separate motion.
Yeah, we'd have to have another motion, uh, put it on the agenda for next week if we want to.
Well, you'd have to have this, this immediately first and then have another.
No, this one, well, since we gave it enough publication time, we could potentially change it next week.
Can we amend the resolution to include level C as an option?
Probably have to, um, rescind the previous resolution into a new one with the, with the change. I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
We can't do it today.
No, you, you wanna put it on the agenda for next week, the same, um, with level B or C?
Did you get all that done? No. Um, so we're discussing having on the agenda for next week to rescind the resolution we just passed today and to do a new resolution to include level C as an option, so it'd be level B or level C. To include level C as an option, so it'd be level B or level C for the new resolution.
Would. Would it be appropriate to next week? Put on the agenda to set a public hearing for a area service C? And have two separate public hearings?
We, we could do that.
You're not gonna make any decision at a public hearing.
We could set them five minutes apart like we do on drainage and then have the same conversation.
That would be more appropriate.
After you have the hearing.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, with the twenty-first, yep, that would, I think that'd be a good option.
Okay, so I will get an agenda item.
We could actually even do that today.
No.
No.
Not only?
No.
Our agenda item only discussed doing a level B.
Okay.
I'll get you an agenda item for that, if the board would like that.
Yeah, and if you wanna, I mean, if everyone's okay with it, you could probably prepare it for the same date, five minutes later.
Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you.
Yep. So is that him?
I don't, I don't know what.
What tile project it is?
Well, I was wondering if he was on the one North Sway City, but.
Hmm.
I wonder if it transcribed it, weird, did you play it and listen to it?
This is Greg, uh, yeah, I was calling on Monday morning, um. I live in Los Creek twenty-nine.
Yeah.
I have a, you have an eighty that's west of us. Actually, I hope I said that right, I live in Los Creek twenty-eight, I have an eighty in Los Creek twenty-nine.
That's over here, okay.
And there looks like there's some tiling gonna go on there, and. Uh, I, they asked for permission from me to go through there and I said I wasn't in favor of that, um. There's still tile, large tiling there, um, I'm just curious if. I had anything to say or, or what was actually going on there, so. My cell phone number is five one five three two zero two four one nine.
What?
Thank you.
No, but if it's private. Private wouldn't.
Right.
Private wouldn't have the right to go on his property without permission.
Without permission.
Right, but we, we have no, we don't have repair work or nothing that I remember, that's what I wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, no, I don't think so.
Wanted to make sure.
I would call back afterwards, yeah. Sometimes Marge, Marge has a repair request, we talked about last week that. Gave Doug for the number and stuff for Drain Four from the completion hearing, so. Any questions from anyone?
Everybody had a chance to look at it and I would entertain a motion, Mr. Whacter, for the supervisor should do the repair work. I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Marge, we have anything else?
The contract for the sixty central, um, they just brought that in, do you want that on the agenda? Or if they need some?
Next week.
For next week, okay.
Five minutes or less.
They just have to sign it until eight thirty, okay.
Yep, one minute. Then sign it.
Thirty-seven, okay.
Yeah, I can sign it afterward.
As fast as a motion gets made.
Uh, we are up to discussion with our auditor.
Okay, so some changes of what I said last week. Um, we will have a meeting next Tuesday the thirty-first till about eight thirty or so, and then we'll be done for the day. There will be no board meeting on the seventh because of the election. I had, um, thought that we could go ahead, but I had already. Uh, earlier this summer told the girls that we would not, so they had already made plans not to have. A meeting on the seventh, so, um, they had already talked to other people about the claims and stuff, we, we've done the thirty-first, so. We will not have a meeting on the seventh, um, because of the election, so. Um, we are right in the middle of getting ready for the city school election, we have training. Tomorrow and Thursday for our election workers over at the election center. And then we had our public test on Friday, um, everything went well for that, and then next week.
Did you have anyone at that test?
No.
Oh, just yours.
And then November third, we will be delivering some equipment and then again, um. The rest of it next week, um, in order to prepare for the election on the seventh. And next week. Um, so far all we have, um, is what we talked about today, and then we just have claims. And then approve a transfer of a motor vehicle title from Sheriff's Office to IT, so hopefully we could get easy with it. And then, um. That's all I have, um, right now, the, the software that we use for our election laptops is called Prusyn Atlas. They have done some updates, um, I am considering some other options, if any of you are interested in hearing what's happening with that or what I'm considering, please stop by my office, I'd be happy to share that.
Mr. Whacter?
That was supposed to have a meeting yesterday, but it was canceled due to some health issues for our executive officer.
Mr. Whacter?
Uh, had no meetings last week, but I have a few today, so. Got KCEDC this afternoon and then, uh, EMA this evening, followed by E, EMA.
Mr. Stecker?
I did not have any meetings last week. Double check.
I didn't have any meetings last week either, I have a drainage meeting tomorrow, Drainage Association. And our annual conference is Friday, December first, Jack, do you plan on going down to the Starlight again?
Should be, I like it.
Mr. Whacter, are you planning on going to Drainage Association meeting?
I haven't planned on it, but.
Usually everybody goes.
December first, you said?
Yes.
Maybe. Good, that's probably the first time it's not on the same date as District Two for ISAC.
Okay, then I'll let Marge know that everybody will plan on being there and she can send in the registration. Okay. Anything else to come before the good of Casoot County? Seeing none, motion to adjourn?
Motion. I beat you to it.
Stecker and Whacter? All those in favor in motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried unanimously.